Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Rubio?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Maps?
Wheeler?
Here. We'll hear from legal counsel and the rules of order and decorum. Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Welcome to Portland City Council. City Council is holding hybrid public meetings with in-person attendance in addition to electronic attendance. If you wish to testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance by visiting the council agenda on the council clerk's webpage at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. You may sign up for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or the first readings of ordinances. Written testimony may be submitted at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you're a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually.
Very good. Thank you. First up is Communications. First item is 166, please. First individual.
Request of John Ellis to address council regarding homelessness, zombie trailers, and crime.
Good morning, John. Yeah, just come on up and, yeah, just come on up any of these three seats. And you don't need to pull the microphone close. Just where it is is usually okay.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Fantastic. Yeah, just wanted to start out that I'm a sixth-generation Oregonian, third-generation Portlander. Love this city, love this state. And just as of recently, let's say the last five years, things have really taken a downhill turn. Grew up in Eastmoreland, live in St. Johns now. I feel that St. Johns is basically put kind of on the back burner of Portland. My parents still live in Eastmoreland. There's no homelessness there, no trailers, no tents. As you recently seen, a couple of weeks ago, there was a guy that went irate at Section Eight housing in St. Johns, caused quite the to-do. That was about three blocks away from my house. Week before that, there was a zombie trailer that was about 20 feet long that exploded. He sent a huge fireball up in the air, had our windows basically almost shattered from the percussion. Went out there, filmed it. It was about 2:00 AM in the morning. Basically, the fire department was right there, but police never showed up after 25 minutes. Felt really bad for the firefighters not having any, you know, backup. Quite a few meth heads and homeless people running around at that time, just trying to scour whatever they could. Every time that there's a vehicle that gets dropped off in front of my house, a trailer, a derelict boat, whatever, they come and drop them off late at night, leave this garbage there. I had to have Mike Krebs on speed dial. I've talked to him so much, just trying to get everything resolved. But everything, you know, it just happens. It gets dropped off, 30 days, green tag, whatever. As soon as that's gone, another one appears. I just want to voice my concern in the sense that I love this city so much and been here for so long. Raised my family here as well, got two small kids, worry for their safety, gunshots happening all the time. It's the point now that we're relocating, we're going to, you know, some other city now that's close by. You know, you look at Lake Oswego, just drive about 15 minutes past Portland, and there's no kind of homelessness that you see there on State Street. All that area seems pretty clean. I just don't understand why this city has gone to pot. I mean, basically, everything's just gone south, and it doesn't seem like anything is being done. And anything that is done, it's only like a slap on the hand, and these people just are able to go ahead and do whatever they want. I understand that there's problems with addiction. I know that there's mental health problems. You know, I've had addiction problems in my past, and I know that, you know, it is a struggle. And, but you do, you know, persevere and then go on. You have to be able to, at that point, to realize that the most important thing is community. And if we can't come together as a community, I just see it being more and more going down the hill. And I'm hoping that some kind of resolution will be made to make the city beautiful again. Because what I've seen has been very disappointing, disgusting, has left me very sad and disappointed in the way that this has actually, you know, become our city. So I hope that you guys will at least listen to what I had to say and then take into account, and hopefully something will happen.
Appreciate you being here today. And we certainly, you're not alone. We hear this, I hear it morning, noon, and night. And I believe we are taking the steps we need to take to address the issue. But I also agree it's not happening quickly enough, and I'm sorry for that. But I do believe we're making progress. I appreciate you being here. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yeah, John, just thank you for testifying. Please keep speaking up. It keeps us on our toes, keeps us focused on these critical livability issues. We feel and see it every single day. You know, we are at a historic moment in the city's history, and it's going to take all of us working together to get out of it. So I appreciate you coming down here and speaking to the issue, and please keep doing it. And it's the good fight. We've got a long road ahead of us as a city, but so appreciate you putting your oar in the water here. Thank you.
John?
Thanks.
Commissioner Ryan? Yeah, thanks for being here, of course. Sorry to hear that you're leaving, and I understand you made your case. You don't have to give your address, of course, but tell me what part of St. Johns I don't want to assume I know.
Yeah, Syracuse and Caitlin, yeah. And then that recently happened with the Section Eight right there at Baltimore and Chicago and Syracuse. So, you know, it's a great neighborhood. It's beautiful. It's just, I feel that every other neighborhood in Portland is kind of like, you know, taking precedence, and St. Johns is kind of like just forgotten about with what the situation is.
Yeah, from those parts, I understand. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, John.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate your being here.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Next individual, please. Kealan, item 167.
Request of Randy Gregg to address council regarding Portland Parks Foundation Community re-envisioning of O'Brien Square.
Good morning, Randy. It's good to see you. How are you doing?
First time I've been here in person in...
Been a long time.
Well, greetings, everybody. I'm Randy Gregg, the executive director of the Portland Parks Foundation. First, I want to thank Mayor Wheeler for including the Parks Foundation in your budget the last four years, five years, and then there's years before that. The return on the investment for leveraging private funding for improvements to parks and public spaces has been about 15 to 1. Equally importantly, this funding, about one-sixth of our operating budget, has allowed us to devote time, often working between bureaus, sometimes governments, and now between your larger new work areas to tackle some difficult projects like building the Barbara Walker Crossing, developing a design and budget for the Thompson Elk statue, Fountain's Return, and creating a community vision for O'Brien Square, the project I've come to talk to you about. As you know, O'Brien will soon be demolished and become an open space surrounded by trees. And in the spirit of this reset, we've nicknamed it Park Block One, which is what it was called in the first city's maps. With the city's densest hotel cluster on one side and several critical social service organizations on the other, Park Block One will be where the city's 1% will meet some of its most economically challenged folks. Next week, the foundation, Portland State University's Center for Public Interest Design, and the Harvard Lope Fellowship are hosting an open house along with a series of focus groups on safety and management, food and retail, hospitality, social services, and arts and culture to create a community vision for this site, to bring it to life the day the demo fences come down. From there, we can be nimble, we can try some things out, see what works and what doesn't. What we can, what we learn from this will inform a future permanent design. We feel like this is a really strong approach to this. The open house is eight to eight on March 8th, right across the street from Park Block One and the former Finnegan's Toy Store. The Center for Public Interest Design, which you might know them from their vibrant recyclable stage sets at Pick-a-thon, and public space designs like Arleta Triangle and the Houseless Villages, tiny house villages they've done for houseless vets and women. They're creating interactive exhibits for the community members to show their ideas. In the meantime, the Harvard Lope Fellows, all experts in community-designed public spaces, will engage focus groups in what they want and what they can, more importantly, what they can bring to the table on O'Brien to bring it to life. I'll be quick. We'll synergize this input. We've got designers from about 15 local firms who will be involved and sort of visualize this, and we'll show it out March 11th. Commissioner Ryan's going to be there for that. And ultimately, we'll develop a report, program designs, and implementation recommendations by June. PPR has invested in this, and the foundation has leveraged about $150,000 in cash and pro bono services for this effort. O'Brien touches all the new work areas, therefore all of you, culture and livability, economic development, infrastructure, and public safety. And so we're really honored to once again leverage your investment in us to build a public-private partnership for a safe, joyful public space.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Next individual, please. Item 168.
Request of Nick Brunner to address council regarding ideas and an offer to help the community. Nick was going to join us in person. Is Nick here?
Nick, are you here? Doesn't look like he's here. Next individual, please. Item 169.
Request of Randy Miller to address council regarding resident experience and Portland street response.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. And thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez, for giving me hope with the sum of messages you've been putting out lately. And I'm here to speak to the Portland Response Team and insist that we had with them. And I want to start by saying unconditional passion does not mean unconditional tolerance. We had a homeless gentleman embed himself underneath a wooden structure patio behind us, very close to our back windows, and he proceeded to smoke ethanol, flash his genitals into our female windows residents, and would be out all night stealing items and piling the junk piles higher and higher. And he'd be slumped over. We would worry about his ODing, but we called 911 multiple times and non-emergency with no response. After two weeks, we finally got the Portland Response Team sent. Their first call to action out to this drugged homeless person to inquire if he, was it to inquire if he needed coffee or perhaps crackers and a blanket? The female team member proceeded to sit under the structure and talk to this person. He asked for a cigarette, in which she proceeded to get one out of her bag, literally stuck it in his mouth, and lit it for him. She exchanged phone contact information with him and told him if he needed anything else just to call her and to also have a nice day. She then proceeded to tell us they had a nice talk and to just leave him some space. At that point, he decided to glare at a female neighbor and tell her to drop dead four times. Only because of this threat, due to the protocol, the team requested police. Realizing the police had been called, the homeless man quickly packed up with the female team member and left. We found out later this was due because he had a warrant out for his arrest. They moved him just a few blocks away, in which they set him up with new clothes, a new tent, supplies, and a brand-new camp. Within 24 hours, he had committed additional crimes, and police were called again. Finally, at this point, the police ran him through the system and discovered a long rap sheet and existing warrant out for his arrest. But he was released back out onto the streets within 24 hours. We just felt like there was zero regard for our safety and as tax-paying citizens, and we felt terrorized and threatened, and for two weeks. Yet he was just offered comfort supplies. So my two points is, after witnessing the response team, it's our belief that a complete remake of this system is in order. As of now, it is operating in an unsafe manner and doing nothing but completely enabling drug addiction, which kills, and criminal street life. We are all feeling very helpless and frustrated. And I just want to make it known that at 21 years old, I was dropped off and forced into detox, and it saved my life. It saves lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, I just want to thank you for testifying. Ben is on my team, is in the back of the room, so if you don't mind connecting, I know that our team has reviewed the 911 call that came in. We think that, actually, it was probably responded to correctly based on the way the call initially came in. We want Portland Street Response interacting in non-threatening situations.
Of course.
And that was the way it was perceived and flagged. And then it was, as we understand it, escalated once there was identification of threats made. But I think it'd be great if you connected with Ben. We appreciate you testifying. We did do, sort of evaluate the matter, and it's an ongoing discussion about how we route these calls. When there's clearly a threat, then that would get accelerated to the police. It just, this one was flagged as not, when it came in the system, it was flagged a little bit differently. So we'll continue to evaluate, you know, getting the right first call on these. But so appreciate your testimony and certainly understand the spirit of it.
Thank you so much. I was concerned that he was under, lighting fires under a wooden structure where people lived above, and they were from the fire department, so I don't know why that wasn't a threat.
It's a fair point, and please connect with Ben on us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next individual, please. Item 170.
Request of Angela Todd to address council regarding resident experience and Portland street response.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm just going to set my alarm so I'm smart.
Oh, there's, there should, the timer should be right. Do you see it in the screen in front of us here?
Oh.
Yeah, that's easier.
There it is. I'm Angela Todd. I'm from PDX Real. I'm a community reporter, and I also do work trying to get citizens involved in their governing. It's my perspective that this is not just your problem, this is our community. We need to be involved in civic affairs, so it's a pleasure to be here. I'm here to tell you guys we need to hear more from you. We have the sanctioned camping plan, for example, and that was, we talked about that about five months ago. Citizens don't know what's going on, and in the meantime, like people are bringing up today in testimony, there's still a lot of crazy things going on out there. And I want to just, I want to encourage you a little bit. I want you to hear me. This is probably the most important work of your lives. We are in a position right now where our city is going to fail if we don't really get smart. And I, Mayor, I feel particularly like a lot of emphasis goes to you and blaming you, and I don't think that that's all fair. There's a lot of things going on with the county and the legislature that are determining things. But I would like to encourage you to start talking to the community about what your barriers are, so that we as a community can start to look at those problems and provide pressure points and encouragement, or frankly, pressure. That is the word I mean about what needs to be done. There's a lot of people who cannot, are not going to live through this if we don't change trajectory, and they are, their livelihood cannot survive. I cannot stress this enough. Your jobs are very hard right now, and I understand that, but this is the work of your life, and we are counting on you, and we need you to communicate more and be more leaders. I have, I have spent a lot of time building my social media, and honestly, sometimes I'm kind of, I'm very, very clear about things I'm not happy about or that I think, but I'm also supportive when things are good. And I want you to know that people don't know when you're in the community. You know, Dan, I talked to you before this. Jan had something that I saw in his opinion about something in a community meeting a year ago. I didn't know what your perspective was. We need you guys in the community. On that note, I want to say two pieces. We've had businesses closing, really big businesses this week. We need you to talk to businesses, and we, we need you in the community. And on that, in closing, March 18th, in Montevilla, where a sanctioned camp is planned, we have set up a town hall at 1:00. I am requesting right now on public record, Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Rubio, and Mayor Wheeler, will you be there to talk with the community about this sanctioned camp? Because we don't know what's going on, and we want to know the plan.
Great.
Do you have an answer for me?
I don't, actually.
Okay.
I'd have to look at my schedule before I commit to anything.
All right. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be following up on that and letting people know. We did have a press conference, and no one from your office showed. They called me the day of the press conference. So we don't get answered whenever we email you or call, and I'm going to get louder, and I'm, I'm a redhead mayor. This, we are not going to stay silent on these issues. And I'll be fair, but, but we need, we need you guys, we need you out there talking to people. People are getting angry because there's not leadership. We just don't know what you're doing. Okay?
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Angela, and I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
And I believe I've been extremely communicative with my strategy, but not in the way you want me to. So if there's other indifferent ways that you think it would be helpful, I'm certainly open to that.
Yeah, part of it's just coming out and seeing people, Mayor.
A lot of people are actually tired of hearing from me, so, but I'd be happy...
I'm not tired of hearing from you.
Good.
We all need to work together. It's our city, too.
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you. And that completes Communications to the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled?
One item has been pulled, 173.
173. We'll move that to the end of the regular agenda. Please call the role on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Rubio?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Consent agenda is adopted. First time certain item, please. Item 171.
Accept the Technology Oversight Committee Quarterly Report.
Colleagues, I'm pleased to introduce this report by the Technology Oversight Committee, which is comprised, as you know, of five members of the public, each selected by one commissioner. The committee is tasked with providing oversight on the city's technology-based projects. Here to present this quarterly report is Ethan Cerma from the Office of Management and Finance, Jeff Baer, the Chief Technology Officer and Director of the Bureau of Technology Services, and Dr. Jimmy Giddard, committee member representing Commissioner Maps. Thank you all for being here today. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you, too. Thank you very much. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ethan Cerma. I work for the Communications Team at the Office of Management and Finance. It's my pleasure to present this quarterly report for the Technology Oversight Committee. This is for the fourth quarter of 2022, just the end of last year. We were originally going to be scheduled to present this report a month ago. We had some last-minute schedule changes, so we're coming to you a month later. The TOC currently has two projects that it is overseeing, the Police Office 365 project, and then the INFOR project, which is a partnership between Water and Environmental Services, BES. So with that, I will hand things over to Jeff to present the report.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ethan, for the introduction, and good morning, Mayor Wheeler and members of City Council. As Ethan noted, we're here to present the final quarterly report for 2022. And before I turn it over to Dr. Giddard, who is joining us virtually, I believe, we have a new TOC member we want to alert the council to that was recently appointed by Commissioner Gonzalez. Joining the committee is Mr. David Tunley, who is a southeast Portland resident and brings his expertise in the cybersecurity field, which is actually very timely for him to join us as we'll be presenting our cybersecurity posture to the TOC at the March meeting later this month. And he was able to join us... And he was able to join us for the first TOC meeting this, this past Monday, and look forward to having him on the committee and co-present the quarterly report in the future. So looking to see if Dr. Gudar is on virtual. I don't see him. There he is.
Hello?
I'll turn it over to Dr. Gudar for his comments.
All right. Thank you very much, Jeff. Good morning, Council. My name is Dr. Jimmy Gudar, representative for Commissioner Maps. And currently, the TOC is overseeing two projects. The first one is Microsoft Office 365 Project. This project will provide police with the ability to collaborate with the rest of the city via Microsoft Office 365. This project is currently in phase two, and is slightly ahead of schedule. The project is currently continuing to have a green status rating across all the QA measures that the TOC and also the team we have established that we review on a monthly basis. The second project we have is the INFOR Project, and this is a project that will migrate both BES and PWB assets onto a no-cloud version and of info-public sector, also we call it IPS. The IPS project prisma solicited new vendors, ultimately selecting the, for the IPS or the info-public sector. This project has been introduced only informally to the TOC and has only a partial rating done by, by QA with no TOC rating yet. The project team will do a formal introduction to the TOC once they're ready, and once they have completed the setup for the implementation, and they have the project timeline in place, and I believe this is projected for this month, the month of March, or the month of April. Those were two projects that the Technology Oversight Committee have been reviewing, and we thank you for listening to our report, and we are available, of course, to answer any questions that you may have. We'll be returning in May. We also already have a volunteer schedule for that, and this concludes our comments for this quarter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jimmy. And, and Council, we appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning to present the quarterly report, and especially supporting the Technology Oversight Committee and the time and effort that each one of those individuals volunteer and put into these important projects. And as Jimmy said, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
I, I have one question. We usually get a dashboard. Do we have the dashboard?
There should have been. It's in the report.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay, so it's all green still, right?
It's all green.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions?
I just.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Just a quick architectural question. So could you give the 30-second version of why police needs to be in a different tenant than the rest of the city?
Yeah, we separated the tenants years ago, just because of the criminal justice information segregation that we needed to have to separate that information that transits within that tenant, so it has to be separate from the other, the rest of the city.
And do you envision any other city bureaus or groups needing to be outside of the city tenant in the future?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just curious. Thank you.
Very good. Is there any public testimony on this report?
We have one person signed up.
Perfect. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sanga Baklani?
In person or online?
I think they were planning to join in person, yes, or online, sorry. Sanga, are you there?
I am here.
Welcome.
My name is Sanga McBaklin. Once again, you're taking the taxpayers' money and wasting it. To our community, wake up, stay woke. Remember, these are no leaders. They are oppressors that will never give you anything to help you or us not be oppressed. History has shown that this government, that we're.
Is this related to the technology report? And if so, can you get to it, or I'm gonna cut you off?
And I said what I said in the beginning. How are you gonna cut me off when I can say what I want to say, correct?
Like that?
Hello?
All right. Any further discussion on the report? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Oh, Mayor, would you like to have somebody make a motion to accept the report?
Oh, please. Can I entertain a motion to accept the report? Commissioner Gonzalez moves. Can I get a second? Commissioner Ryan seconds the report. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
I want to thank Jeff Baer and his team over at BTS for their work on, on staffing this commission, and all the members of the commission for their, their dedication, their time serving the community. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Ethan, for being here this morning. And Jimmy, I've noticed you've become a doctor in the last quarter, so congratulations on that, and welcome, David. You're a very hard-working volunteer committee. Your reports are very frequent, and I appreciate it. I accept the report. Aye.
Gonzalez.
I'm excited about the diversity of the advisory committee, including both the different communities they represent, as well as different parts of the IT ecosystem, both institutional and startup. Think that's gonna lend itself well for the city. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I want to thank the representatives on the Technology Oversight Council. This is very difficult work. It's challenging. It's technical. We're lucky to have the expertise that we have, and these are citizen volunteers. They do not get paid for their efforts. They are simply concerned citizens who have an interest in participating in how we do things here in local government. For those who feel that your tax dollars are not well-spent, or that the council is adrift, or that we aren't delivering the kinds of services that you want, we have dozens of oversight committees, and each and every person in the city is welcome to step up as the members of this Technology Oversight Council have done to serve the interests of the broader community. I really think the work here is exceptional. I appreciate the fact that, over the course of several years, I've watched a number of these projects get back on track because of the work of these engaged citizens, and I just want to thank them for that. So I'm happy to vote aye. Thanks again, Ethan, Jeff, and Jimmy, for, for your hard work on this. And the report is accepted. Yes.
Mayor, I'm very sorry. We had someone else signed up for this item. They were in person.
Oh, let's hear it. Yeah, sure.
My, my mistake. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Ann Jeanette Brown was gonna join us in person. Is Ann Jeanette here?
Ann Jeanette?
Did you want to speak to the side? Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
Not a problem. All right, next item, also timed certain, item 172. I'm sorry, we're not at that time certain yet. We can't do that. We'll go to the regular agenda. Item 177, please.
Accept bid from Moore Excavation Incorporated for the South Portland Burlingame Phase II Sewer Rehabilitation Rebid Project for $6,242,177.
Colleagues, this project is part of the Bureau of Environmental Services Large-Scale Sewer Rehabilitation Program. This item authorizes the repair replacement of approximately 6,430 feet of aged and deteriorating public sewer pipes, as well as the addition of about 1,000 feet of lateral connections from the main sewer line to the curbs of homes and businesses in South Portland, as well as the Burlingame area. Chief Procurement Officer, Mr. Beaco Taylor, is here with us today to walk us through this proposal. Good morning, Beaco. It's good to see you.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler. Good to see you. Good morning, members of City Council. For the record, my name is Beaco Taylor. I'm the Chief Procurement Officer. On November 10th, 2021, City Council approved ordinance 190596 for the completion of this project. At that time, the engineering estimate for the project was $6,508,000, and the confidence level was high. Procurement Services issued the invitation to bid on December 20th, 2022, with a due date of January 19th, 2023. In total, we received three bids. Moore Excavation was the low bidder. This was a low-bid methodology on the competitive bid. Their bid was, came in at $6,242,000, which is about 4% below the engineering estimate. The city's standard 20% aspirational goal did apply to this solicitation, and the following is the breakdown on the utilization that Moore Excavation submitted in their proposal. Moore will complete about 70% of this project. 20% will be completed by certi, certified co-bid subcontractors, and about 10% with nine certified subcontractors. Just to give you a little bit more granularity on the subcontractor plan, of the 20%, 14%, closer to 15% will be completed by minorities. Moore Excavation has committed to subcontracting 20% to co-bid firms, and they met that goal. To promote the aim of encouraging contractors to diversify their subcontractor utilization until it avoid the city's, avoid misuse of the city's subcontractor equity program, hard construction costs attributable to a subcontractor owned, controlled, or managed by a relative of the person who owns or controls the contract shall not count towards the 20%. I made that comment because one of the prime, one of the major subcontractors on this project, Iron Horse, has a relation to Moore Excavation, and I wanted to put that on record. As reference to past performance, Moore Excavation is located in Fairview, Oregon. It is not a state-certified contractor. They have a current City of Portland business tax registration and are in full compliance with all of the city's contracting requirements. The project is part of BES's Large-Scale Sewer Rehab Program, which is funded through fiscal year, end of fiscal year '23. If there are any questions about the procurement process, I'm happy to answer them now. If you have any questions about the project specific to engineering estimate schedule, otherwise, BES Project Manager, Daniel Boatman is in attendance as well. With that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions at this point? Commissioner Gonzalez?
Just one quick question. Labor representation in the workforce, do we have any visibility on this project?
Not now. I mean, we could provide that once we get into the, once they submit, BOLI and other certified work, you know, work plans, reports, compliance reports. So as of today, I can't provide you with workforce, but I could provide your staff with that once the project is started.
Certainly, as we get into these larger projects, some visibility there would be appreciated.
Most definitely. We do have, we track that in our compliance department.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Taylor. I have a quick question. You mentioned something about, and I didn't catch it quite, the connection to Iron Horse contract.
Yes.
Can you, can you explain that again, so I, I understand?
So Moore Excavation committed 9.5% of this contract to a co-bid certified firm. That firm is Iron Horse. So in total, if we were to count that firm, we would be around 30%, but we cannot count that 10% towards our aspirational goal, because Iron Horse has relations, has a family relationship with Moore Excavation.
Oh, I see, okay.
I wasn't clear on that, you know, so I apologize for reading through that, but I should have made that a point of emphasis for council.
Great. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, now I have another question. Thanks for bringing this up. So if you could add it, what would the percentage go to?
Right over 31% co-bid certified, if we did add that.
Thanks.
Correct.
Is, is that a state rule that precludes you from combining those?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that makes sense, I guess. Good. Do we have any public testimony on this report?
We had one person sign up, Sanga Mabaklani, but I think they have left the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
I'm moved.
Commissioner Ryan moves. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Rubio, seconds. Any further discussions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Thank you, Director Taylor, and the procurement team, and the team at BES for your work on this project. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Director Taylor. We've been seeing a lot of you. You've been busy, you and your team. I appreciate it. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Thank you, Director Taylor. I vote aye.
Maps, or, sorry, Wheeler.
These are very good co-bid numbers. I really appreciate it, and I've seen improvement since you've been director, and so I know you're working it hard. Thanks.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. I vote aye. Report's accepted. Next item, we are still not at 10:15 for the time certain, so we'll do 178 off the regular agenda.
Authorize water revenue bonds to finance water system capital improvements not to exceed $425 million, and to refund outstanding water revenue bonds.
Colleagues, this ordinance authorizes the issuance of water system revenue bonds. The Portland Water Bureau manages the city's water system utility and periodically issues bonds for all capital projects. Financing large water capital projects with bonds provides more stable financial operations for the water utility and more predictable water rates for the city's ratepayers. The city's debt manager, Matt Girac, and Water Bureau Director of Finance and Support Services, Cecilia Heewen, are here to talk through the item. Welcome, Matt and Cecilia. Are they online, I take it?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Matt Girac, debt manager within the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services, and I'm also joined by Cecilia Heewen from the Portland Water Bureau. This ordinance authorizes the city to issue up to $425 million of water system revenue bonds to finance various projects under the Portland Water Bureau's Capital Improvement Plan, including portions of the water treatment program as required under the city's bilateral compliance agreement with the Oregon Health. The borrowing authorization is expected to cover approximately the next two years of capital expenditures that are to be funded by publicly sold water revenue bonds. Of the total borrowing authorization, the Bureau currently anticipates issuing approximately $205 million of revenue bonds this fiscal year to cover certain capital expenditures for the next 12 months. However, given the recent volatility in the bond market, the city's Debt Management Division will be assessing the market for opportune conditions to potentially issue a larger amount in order to lock in advantageous long-term interest rates. Based on today's market conditions, the estimated borrowing rate is approximately 4% for the 25-year borrowing, though this will vary depending on market events that occur between now and the bond sale. Additionally, this ordinance authorizes the issuance of water revenue refunding bonds for the purposes of attaining debt service savings. The city's 2013 Series A bonds are outstanding in the amount of $150 million and require an above-market average interest rate of approximately 4.12%. These bonds may be refinanced without a prepayment penalty.
Right.
The current estimated interest rate on the refunding bonds is 3.15% for the 15-year term. Refinancing of the 2013 A bonds at these rates is estimated to generate annual debt service savings of $750,000 per year through the bond's final maturity date in fiscal year 2038. This is equivalent to approximately $9 million of present value savings. Over the next few months, the city's Debt Management Division and the Portland Water Bureau will be jointly preparing the documentation for facilitating the bond sale, which is expected to occur in late spring or early summer. That concludes the overview of this item, and we are happy to answer any questions on the financing.
I have a question about this, Matt. So this is obviously a sizable issuance, and we're looking at sort of what I would describe as, as a disjointed interest rate period. I'm curious to know what the thinking was in terms of choosing to issue bonds now versus potentially delaying the issuance of this bond and hoping for a better interest rate environment? Is, is there some urgency to this, or what, what drove your, your timing at this particular time? Why now?
The, the timing is primarily driven by the capital spend rate of the Bureau. So as the Bureau has certain thresholds of liquidity metrics, and it funds, continues to fund capital work, essentially, it needs to issue a new series of bonds in order to continue that work, in order to maintain the, the credit quality of the water system.
Okay, and so this, is this what you would describe, then, as a regular issuance?
Yes, this is a, a routine issuance. Both utilities typically will issue bonds every one to two years, which is a pretty, pretty regular occurrence for, for a large utility system.
Okay, and so just to reiterate what you said, to make sure I understood it, delaying the issuance of this bond could potentially jeopardize our credit rating? Is that accurate?
Correct, unless there's, would be a major standstill on spending, which also would not be advisable.
Okay, good. And that, that certainly makes sense because obviously if our credit rating deteriorates, the cost of issuing goes up. So I, I see the trade-off that you're engaged in there. Thank you. Any further questions, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Just to clarify in the mayor's question, the reason it would have a negative potential impact on credit rating is that it would be a liquidity impact if we delayed issuance now? Just want to make sure I'm following the connection there.
Yeah, so Cecilia, feel free to chime in as well. But so based on the capital program that the utility is undertaking and all of the projects that it's undertaking, including water treatment and others, it would be required to spend down its cash, its actual cash, which in order to preserve the credit quality of the water system, you want to maintain a certain level of liquidity in order to protect the system from shocks. So that's something that the, that investors and credit rating analysts look at is how much, when I say liquidity, essentially means cash funding levels in order to withstand any sort of unforeseen circumstances that, that affect the system.
And, and the point being, we have capex that's committed, we have a spending plan that's committed, we're spending those dollars in the next X amount of months. So if we don't get the bond proceeds, we're eating into that liquidity.
That's a hundred percent correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any further questions? Public testimony on this.
No one signed up.
All right, this is the first reading of a non-emergency ordinance, it moves to second reading. Ten seventeen, we can now go to the time certain item. Item number one seven two, please.
Accept the Police Accountability Commission quarterly report for October through December twenty twenty-two.
Colleagues, I will turn this over to Samir Canal of the Community Safety Division to introduce this item and our guest presenters, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you all members of city council. For the record, my name is Samir Canal, the advisory boards and commissions manager for the Community Safety Division. I'll be passing this over to Faith Aiken, one of the former co-chairs of the commission, to introduce two presenters who are remote and three that are here in, in chambers, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning Mayor Wheeler, good morning city council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the quarterly report of the Police Accountability Commission for October through December twenty twenty-two. My name is Faith Aiken and I was a co-chair of the Police Accountability Commission during the fact-finding phase of our work, which ended in October. I'm joined today by Christian Oriana Bauer, Ajay Amici, and Tiersa Oriana, along with Catherine McDowell, who were co-chairs during the powers and duties phase, which started in late October and continued after the end of this quarter. You may be wondering, why does it take five community volunteers to give a quarterly report? And I want to take the time to note that this participation before you reflects our commitment to working in partnership with city council for a first-of-its-kind, community-led police oversight system. The report has been divided into three sections. The first covers the end of the fact-finding phase of our commission's work. The second covers the portion of the next phase, the powers and duties, which occurred during this quarter. And then the third section addresses the commission's request for support from city council.
Cool. Hi, I'm Christian. In November twenty twenty, eighty-two percent of Portland voters supported the creation of Charter Section two dash one, test ten, sorry, which authorizes a new community police oversight board to both replace the current system of administrative investigations, discipline, and accountability, and allow for a greater community voice in changing the policies and directives of Portland police. The Police Accountability Commission was created by the city council to develop the parameters and details of the community police, community police oversight board.
Hello, I'm Tiersa. The commission self-organized through March twenty twenty-two. From April through mid-October, the commission researched and heard from experts and affected parties, which resulted in three outcome documents. After that, the commission moved into the powers and duty phase, which began in late October and ended in February twenty twenty-three. In total, the commission held twenty events in this three-month period, which means the Police Accountability Commission remains one of the most active parts of the city government.
Commission also had two briefings with IPR, one with the then-city commissioner Joanne Hardesty and started its powers and duties phase of work with a deep assessment of the charter section that outlines the community police oversight board, which included a briefing from the people who crafted that charter text, Heidi Brown and Derek Bradley. The fact-finding phase's outcome documents are not code recommendations, but they are a set of shared understandings among members as to what information has been learned and the commission's viewpoints on it. They have each already been an important contribution to the commission's decisions and eventual recommendations to city council. The actual recommendation development began with the next phase of work, which we'll be discussing in a few minutes. There were three outcome documents. The first was barriers and best practices to police accountability in Portland, which was part of last quarter's report. But today we'll talk about the other two, which assess proposals from subject matter experts and practices in other jurisdictions.
City council tasked the commission with inviting experts to testify and answer questions, research necessary topics, and also to invite and seek out subject matter experts in Resolution three seven five two seven. In Resolution three seven five four eight, city council said that the commission may seek out expertise from those they identify as beneficial to the process, both within and outside of Portland. The commission began by looking at national and industry groups on civilian oversight, such as the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, or NACOL, law enforcement sources such as those at the U.S. Department of Justice, and recommendations given by contractors previously hired by the city, such as Eileen Luna Firebaugh's report from two thousand eight. It also included the recommendations of Amici to Portland Settlement Agreement, staff support in other jurisdictions, giving their opinion on what worked and didn't work in their various systems and other sources. The commission considered these recommendations and those which they determined were worth deeper consideration were noted in our document, as were those we considered proposals to avoid. Summarizing these here, they included recommendations that healthy civilian oversight systems for police are independent, have authority to make disciplinary decisions, and can influence the policy and directives of police, have access to information from the police necessary to do that work, can investigate complaints from the community as well as major incidents where there may not be a complainant, can apply a consistent set of findings so that the complainant, law enforcement, city council, and the public can look at cases and understand what the outcomes are, can offer mediation for lower-level allegations, are reflective of those most affected, have guaranteed resources, including funding and staff, to do the work they need to do, are transparent, and finally, are able to evolve and improve over time. These items are not likely to be surprising, even though they come from different sources. They say many of the things, the same things that our charter text already reads. This is a testament to council's wisdom in crafting the charter text to be presented to voters and the voters in approving the charter text.
Good morning, I'm Catherine McDowell, one of the current co-chairs of the commission. The commission also assessed other jurisdictions' practices, looking through hundreds of different practices in several categories. Some aspects assessed our jurisdiction and authority, including the oversight board's authority to determine its internal structure, how it assesses information, its process for addressing allegations of misconduct, its ability to structurally oversee the police, including recommending changes to policy, how the board membership is structured, how the agency is structured, and its responsibility to engage with the community. And finally, transparency, including reports to council and access and reports to the public. The commission also looked at practices to avoid from other jurisdictions. Again, many were examined and here are a few examples. Being unable to finish an ongoing investigation due to a statute of limitations, having parallel investigations between civilian oversight systems and internal affairs, releasing personal information of complainants to officers the complaint is about, and forcing community members to give complaints about police to the police. You may notice that some of these issues we addressed in our previous quarterly reports because members of city council or other bravers, such as those from P P B's Professional Standards Division, noted some of these exist in Portland too and are barriers. Some others were mentioned under good practices because Portland does not have these. For example, Portland has already partially addressed this last issue I raised by ensuring community members can give complaints through independent police review. Although, although these are not yet official recommendations, these documents have been very helpful in the powers and duties phase, which including, included developing the functions of the new system in more detail. This was also required by council when they asked us to speak to impacted communities. It's also just a good practice. We anticipate that if we suggest something new, council members may ask, has anyone tried this? And we want to be able to answer that question definitively when presenting our eventual code change recommendations to you later this year.
You Catherine, we're going to take a pause here and take any questions from city council members and then move it on to our next co-chairs to discuss the next phase of work included in the report.
I, I had a question and if you can't answer it now, that's fine too. So on this list, on the slide that's currently up, the practices which you want to avoid, I'm trying to figure out how to avoid some of these things. Are, are you actually going through the work on each and every one of these issues and trying to find an alternative solution? For, for example, the parallel investigations between the civil, civilian oversight system and internal affairs. We still have to do the internal affairs investigation to ensure that policies have been adhered to. How would you propose making sure that there isn't duplication or overlap or simultaneous investigations, looking at slightly different parts of a particular incident?
Yeah, you know, that's a very good question and I would say that is what we are starting to look at in, you know, the current phase and have looked at somewhat in the previous phase that we'll be reporting on. You know, I think that overlap can be a problem if it represents duplication and particularly if it is, it results in inconsistent findings or processes, that's not fair to anybody, the complainant or the member who's subject to the complaint. So we're looking at how to minimize that. There may be situations where parallel investigations are appropriate. For example, if you have a criminal investigation and a civilian review, you're, you're necessarily going to have an overlapping investigation. But I think our, our point here, and this is based on feedback we got from, really from all stakeholders, that the current system is overly complex and contains a fair amount of duplication. So we're looking to minimize that. Obviously, there may be some situations where it's impossible to do so.
I also wanted to say, so thinking about the different phases of work, we're really trying to stick within the very specific guidelines of what that phase of work is supposed to do. And so, you know, we looked at powers and duties, like what are the powers of the new board? And, you know, we're in the structure and details, like, okay, what is the structure? And then we're going to be going to the transition, sort of, we have been doing this work of, okay, what do we want? And then we have, the transition portion is really like, how do we get from where we are now? Which has, you know, these kind of requirements and these barriers and all these different things to the system that we have been spending all this time kind of creating. And so I would say we haven't really necessarily delved deeply into that question just because we're really sticking to like what our phase of work is supposed to do because we don't really want to have, you know, scope creep and we're already spending two to three days a week, you know, two to three-hour meetings and taking on more work for a phase of work is just not possible right now. So just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And I'll, I'll just say what I said earlier, you're not getting paid very well to be
Yeah, zero.
On this committee and it is
And less and less.
When you spread it out over an hourly basis. But again, I really, I want to, first of all, in case I forget later, I really want to appreciate the time that you're all putting into this. This is a significant time commitment that you've already put into this and there's more to do, as you said. And I, I want to acknowledge and respect that. With regard to the statutes, statutes of limitation, that's driven, I presume, by the state, the actual timeframes? I'm not sure I'm right about that, but the, the actual determination of, of limitation, I believe, is a state function. I would assume that your effort here then would be on speeding up the process? Is that an accurate assumption or a false assumption? You can't really move the statute of limitations time. The clock is ticking and the state determines that. But presumably, we could figure out ways to speed the process up?
You know, I think that's fair and I will say that we are, you know, looking at, IPR currently has a hundred and eighty-day presumptive timeline. That's in the compliance agreement and that's certainly something we would be, you know, including or trying to beat in our review because I think we have consistently gotten the feedback that, you know, the process can be extended too far and create frustration for all people involved. But I think where this comes up is where you have tolling because you have, for example, a criminal investigation or a civil suit and something that has caused the administrative process to be stayed while another process continues. And I think the issue is really just trying to be sure that we don't like toll these civilian oversight investigations so long that we run into a statute of limitations issue.
And I'd be interested if, if collective bargaining is a part of this as well. I, I don't know that it is, but I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, it may be. And I would also argue that from the perspective of the members being investigated, there would probably be some support for speeding this process up too. It's a really long process and people are in limbo while they're going through this, this process and exercising their rights under the process as well as the, the investigation continuing. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm making decisions on investigations that started years ago. It's a really slow process. And so I'd, I'd always be interested in your thoughts on that.
I actually had something to add to the previous point, which was, we've definitely run into, the statute of limitations thing that you mentioned, we've run into a few moments where state law kind of constricts the thing that we're trying to build just by nature of the fact that it exists within a larger, more complex system, which is one of the reasons that we got implemented to do this in the first place. And so the, the list here of things to avoid were kind of an overarching list. We recognize that some of those things are going to take a longer period of time to try and overcome. And I feel like I at least, I only speak for myself, I think other people in the commission also share this, this feeling. But I don't view this thing that we're, the board, new board that we're building as like the answer. It's like a first step in part of it. So I think when we present the code, we do have, we're, we're keeping, or keeping a tally of things that we can't cover right now that might need to be covered in the future. So like barriers that might actually, even if the board is implemented, there still might be like state laws that may affect its work just by the nature of the fact that they exist because we operate within the state of Oregon and within the country of the United States. So those are kind of things for like future reference or things to cover in the future. I don't know if that helps at all, I just wanted to add that.
It does and I appreciated the inclusion in this report, I think it was on a previous slide, that, that this, this will be a learning effort and there will be evolution as this unfolds. And I, I think that's a healthy thing to include in any policy, so I appreciate that perspective.
Absolutely.
Can I also add regarding the question that you just had? I think I'm sort of misremembering possibly what the question was, but. So I just want to mention that a big part of the work that we're doing, this, this phase of work is thinking about the advocates and the people that are actually walking people through this process. And so I don't know necessarily about speeding up the process, but in terms of giving people more support along this process. I mean, hopefully, you know, that kind of support will, will support investigations to proceed in a reasonable timeframe. So, I mean, it doesn't, the, the focus on advocates and victim advocates and that kind of thing doesn't necessarily directly talk, speak to that point. But I think the point is, you know, having advocates will make the system sort of smoother for, and provide the support needed for investigations to be completed.
Fair point, thank you for that, appreciate it. Colleagues, any other, Commissioner Gonzalez?
What's your, thanks so much for your report today. What, what is your perception of city support for your processes? Are you getting the resources you need and from, from the city?
I mean, I feel so, as hard as we're working, you know, staff is, like, there's so much. I mean, I feel so, as hard as we're working, you know, staff is like, there's so much that they're constantly having to do. And especially in regards to like community engagement, you know, that process started really late, you know, because we didn't have a person to do that work. And so in terms of having like the amount of people that kind of do the behind the scenes stuff that allow us to do our work more smoothly. Yeah, I think that they need more support, definitely, you know, more staffing. And besides that, you know, one of the things we're, I think we're going to mention later, but I'm just throw out there is having a little bit more time. You know, even if we're not necessarily going all the way to October, as is stated in the D O J settlement agreement, at least like, you know, a few more months or something. Because like I said, right now, we're we're meeting like two, sometimes up to four times a week. And and that's like at the current pace, you know, to to try and finish, and it's been a lot on us. So just to be able to like have a couple more months to do this work would really alleviate some of that and provide us with more support to do this better and to do due diligence. Because this amount of work and all of us have jobs and lives and stuff like, I think it will, it will potentially limit the the quality of what we present just because we're so like overworked, so I don't know. What do you think?
I agree, yeah. I mean, we spoke with a few of you during the fact finding phase in the summer. Some of you might remember, and you all voiced support for the work. So overall, felt relatively supported. Definitely staff is understaffed and they're working very, very hard. There are days where I'm in awe of how they're even doing it. And that's coming from, you know, us who are also doing a lot of work as well. And yeah, time is the main thing for the most part, yeah. And then any extra staff, I guess, same points just echoing.
One last question, can you just reiterate what your output, what your, your, what output you are envisioning come October twenty twenty-three? So what what tangibly does it look like, just to reiterate what, you know? Because I'm the new guy, so kind of walk me through what you anticipate your output will be by fourth quarter this year.
Definitely. Are you are you asking with the outcome of the, what we're trying to implement, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
What does it look like?
What's it? Yeah, for sure. Well, we're constructing it right now, so it's not fully formed, obviously. But I, from my understanding, it would be a recommendation that we'd be giving to you all to implement a new oversight system, which I think would take the form of code, I believe. That would be city code. There would be some city code in there. So I think it'd be a document that would kind of propose these things. But from, I don't know how much context you have, but I'll give a little bit. Back on some of it was in the report as well. But it was from the D O J settlement agreement. So it's already kind of been implemented. The only thing would be to approve it, basically, or to reject it and then come up with one yourselves. That would be, those would be the two options. I don't know if that provides context or not. Hopefully, that was helpful.
It does, but just to be clear, but you are envisioning some code proposals.
I believe that would be, there would be part of that, that part of the recommendation would be part of it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
From my understanding. Someone else can correct if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding.
I just want to say that I think that, you know, in everything we do, we go back to the council charge that, you know, formed us, that created us, that empowered us. And we just go through and we are ensuring that we're checking the boxes. So all of the things you've charged us to do, all of the people you've asked us to talk to, all of the research you've asked us to do, we're really very systematically going through that. So the, at the end, we will be delivering a recommendation for the structure of this new oversight board that will be based on all of the very specific items you asked us to look at, all of the specific conversations you've asked us to have. And we'll be working certainly with the city's attorney, city attorney's office to present that to the extent there's code changes that need to be implemented to, you know, go to the next step. We will be presenting those as well for your review.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Faith. I just want to hop in really quick. Commissioner Gonzalez, I think sometimes as we share our quarterly report, it can be confusing of like, what's the what here? And a reminder that this is a look back all the way back to October. And so what we are sharing today is really the results of fact finding and research that was done back through October. And my colleagues before you are going to come soon to then present, okay, what did we do with the facts that we found? And so that's why this is going to be a little disjointed of like, wait, you're kind of going back in time and then forth. And so it's important when we consider the full timeline that what we just presented was the research and the facts that we found based on feedback from experts and experts within the city. And then my colleagues will be presenting, well, so what? What are we going to do with the facts that we found in the research to recommend a new system? And I think one thing that will provide a lot of clarity moving forward is we have just approved what the powers and duties will be, as my colleagues will mention. And we have a very helpful flow chart. And I think if you're so interested in getting into the weeds, that is a very helpful demonstration of what we are recommending the new oversight board to be. It provides a visual demonstration of what happens for a complainant as they make a complaint. So hopefully, that is helpful for me.
Yes, please share with our office. It'd be appreciated of that. Thank you.
We'll now move into explaining the powers and duties phase, which Christian, Jay and I were co-chairs for. The commission organized its work into six phases. As previously mentioned, the powers and duty space was the third one and focused on the functions of the new system. We'll report on the first half of it today and the second half when we come back in two months to give the report for January through March of this year. Starting in February, the commission moved into the structure and detail space, which is the form of the new system. After that concludes, the commission will know what the end goal looks like and will develop the transition plan and how this fits into the broader system of city government. And finally, convert all of these agreements into code text and come to agreement to recommend all that to city council. We're also doing community engagement events, as previously mentioned, and parallel to everything throughout this process.
And during this phase of work, the commission was broken up into three subcommittees, each of which was focused on developing one part of the new system. First was access to information, which covered how the oversight board and agency will receive the information they needed to do their work. Access, obviously, it's in the title. Second is officer accountability, which is how an allegation of misconduct is processed within the new system, including the creation of a new flow chart and timelines. That's the flow chart that Faith was referencing. Third is structural oversight, which is a community oversight of the Portland Police Bureau as a whole and included recommending policy changes to policy directives and if necessary, law that goes to Portland Police Bureau leadership or city council. By the end of the quarter, all three documents were being drafted with access to information nearly ready for a full commission review.
So I mentioned that we got a new staff person for community engagement, which means that P A C community engagement accelerated during this quarter. The commission has already heard from many people through public comments at meetings, starting at the first meeting of the P A C. In June, we started receiving advanced public comment. In September, the city hired an engagement and communications coordinator to support this work. And finally, in this quarter, we began holding community engagement events, including two listening sessions in November. And to anybody listening live or at home who wants to give input into the Police Accountability Commission's work, we want to hear from you. There are multiple ways to do this, including coming to a live meeting, giving public comments, or coming to a community engagement event. And the link to our calendar is on the slide. You can also give public comments between meetings, which is circulated to the members in three ways. We have web form, a voicemail line, and we can do postal mail as well. So we're going to pause here, and even though we just took questions, I guess we'll take some more questions and then continue into the last part of the presentation.
Why don't I suggest, just in the interest of time, why don't you go into the last part of the presentation? Let's hold our questions till the end, and I know we have substantial public testimony as well. So I'm mindful of the fact that people are waiting to testify.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this final section is on what's coming up as well as requests for city support. This report covers October to December, and subsequently, we finished the powers and duties phase. The structure and details phase started in February. This is a critical time for the commission as we continue our work, and we have a request to city council for one specific resource to assist us in this work. I mentioned before, the P A C meets very frequently to try and meet the council's deadline and assignments. By the time it will have existed for eighteen months, it will have, the commission will have had at least one hundred and nineteen events, which is more than even the charter commission had in two years. And we all know the charter commission did a lot of work. Continuing to work at this level of frequency creates two problems for the P A C. If we focus on full commission meetings, we're going to either lose members to burnout or resignation or missing meetings and needing to be replaced. If we focus on subcommittees, equity between the members is diminished and members with day jobs, caregiving responsibilities, health concerns and more will be able to contribute less relative to their peers, making the P A C less representative of this community. And the P A C's work is what is required to do the job given by city council. We're not saying this is hard to complain. We're saying that this is a lot. We want to do it right, and we have been doing it right. But as community members who are doing this on a volunteer basis, we need your help. On December eighth, the commission, by consensus, asked city council for that help. As you know, under the settlement agreement, the commission has to present to the city council by October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. But the city council has given the current commission until June ninth, twenty twenty-three. The October twenty-ninth date came about as part of a council ordinance, which amended the settlement agreement and put the commission into the text, which city council approved unanimously. Also, we know that having a clear view of our eventual deadline as early as possible will help with the planning, with the project planning and scheduling of meetings to get there. We don't want to schedule three to four meetings a week now and lose members who can't do that many. Then in a couple of months, the timeline shifts and we go to one meeting a week when we could be steady and predictable for P A C members and for the public in the meantime.
Our next slide. Thank you. So our request is based off of the scope of work. It's large and complex. It's based off of limitations of volunteers' time and trying to avoid asking members to meet more than twice a week. As a side note, recognize that Commissioner Ryan brought this before us at our September fifteenth quarterly report. It's based off of all the different bodies of law we need to understand and navigate in creating a system to recommend to city council. And also on the fact that we can't move as quickly as we'd like sometimes due to bureaucratic delay within the city, like waiting five weeks for a new member's email address to be created or four months for facilitators' contracts to be approved. It's based off of our pacing last spring and summer being slower, in part because we originally thought this settlement agreement deadline of October twenty-ninth was our deadline. And then we were told later the deadline from court slash D O J to the city for the commission to stop meeting is different from the deadline from the city to the commission, for the commission to stop meeting. Sorry, that's a mouthful. Thanks. Next slide, please.
Cool. And this request is based on looking at other large scale, complex city projects as well, like the charter commission, which got two years to do its work. We discussed how beneficial the briefings have been so far. In the documents we presented today, we quoted Commissioner Rubio and Mayor Wheeler in our officer accountability document, which will present the next quarterly report. We specifically cited Commissioner Map's advice as well. We've cited Commissioner Ryan's advice in a document previously presented, and we look forward to learning from Commissioner Gonzalez in the next few weeks. We also quoted our Portland Police Bureau briefers as well as others, and we want to keep hearing people. And we still have briefings we haven't yet been able to schedule that are really important to the system's success, like the Portland Police Commanding Officers Association, for example. And finally, we looked at the language given to us by city council, which was mentioned earlier. We've been going through that during each phase. Here's some of the resolutions. Resolution three, seven, five, two, seven says that an inclusive, diverse, community-driven process is needed to develop recommendations to city council for the structure and processes of the new oversight system. Working with the community takes time to build relationships and gather people together, especially those who might not trust the city to do the right thing, which, as we even heard earlier, you know, there is some of that, obviously. Resolution three, seven, five, two, seven and three, seven, five, four, eight, both say that there must be a lengthy involved process where consideration is given to the complex topic of police accountability. And I mentioned earlier how we've been running into that complexity throughout the process as well. Thank you.
This was on the city council agenda on January eighteenth and was referred back to the mayor's office. We'd ask if you could please bring that document back to the council agenda and vote on it here, if possible, to give the commission enough time to do its work. While other resources are helpful and great, there is one resource which the city council has that you could give us today and which would be most beneficial to ensuring we can do this work and do it as well as we would like, and that is time.
In closing, we'll briefly discuss what's coming up next. We're in the structure and details phase, and we're working on board membership, the oversight, staff and agency, and reporting and transparency, which is how the system provides information to the public and to the city council. We have community engagement events coming up, the next one of which is on March twenty-second. Finally, the next quarterly report covering January through March twenty twenty-three will be presented in late April or early May.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to brief you on the work of the Police Accountability Commission through the end of twenty twenty-two. We look forward to continuing our work to honor the will of the voters in creating a new system of accountability, including a new oversight board for the Portland Police. This concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may all have.
Thank you. Excellent report. Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that report. It was very thorough. And again, I just want to reiterate the mayor's comments about your dedication and your tireless hours upon hours of work. Just a big appreciation there. My questions are, I have a couple. First is about community engagement. You've been talking about having sessions with community engagement. Can you talk about how those are going and how attended are they? Like, what is, like, what is the number that you're doing? And then how how well attended and what are some common themes that are coming up and questions that you're getting?
So I would say, I mean, I'm not sure about exact numbers, but definitely a few dozen. Yeah, like anywhere from twenty, thirty, I would say, just something. Depending on the events. And what we're seeing is kind of a general frustration with the current system. And I think a lot of people sort of misunderstand what our charge is, and they think that we're in charge with shaping this current system. So we get, you know, a lot of people that are really angry because they feel like the current oversight system is not working and there is not accountability. And so that is definitely a large part of like the sentiment from a lot of people. And then we also have people from the totally opposite side that are annoyed and angry that we're fulfilling the D O J's requirements in the settlement agreement, like that don't think we should be doing this at all and that it's a waste of time, even though it is something that is mandated by the Department of Justice as a result of, you know, actions committed like by, you know, the Portland Police Department. So we have a wide range of opinions and, and, yeah, a wide range of just different, yes, sides that come to our, our meetings. But I think the general consensus is like, what we have right now is like not working for anybody. And so that definitely, all sides are saying that.
Okay, and and the next question I have is about, more about your internal processes. And you have a very diverse body that's that's doing all this work. Can you tell me a little bit about how the process itself is inclusive and how you're balancing out voices to ensure equal participation and accessible, inclusive, equitable participation of all its members?
Well, I don't know if Faith wants to jump in because I see Faith's hand is up. But if not, then I can.
Sure. Just one comment regarding the community engagement events. I think one of the things that we've been consistently hearing is that our events have not been trauma-informed. And so the matter of violence from police and asking community members for feedback can create a lot of trauma for people. And so that's something that we've been mindful of is how do we do this in a sensitive way and gather feedback and create a place for people to be heard, but also to not re-traumatize them? I think that is a really important consideration and something that we, I don't think we've nailed. It's something that we need to continue to work on. And then I think your further question, Commissioner Rubio, is that is a constant challenge. There's twenty volunteers. We have diverse lived experiences. I think one of the questions and the application for us to be a participant is how do you work within groups with diverse opinions or backgrounds? And so that's something that we're all really mindful of. I think one thing that we, I acknowledge is that equity does not mean equal. So some folks are carrying a larger load than others. And I don't think that is unequal, but it's often not inequitable. So as folks have more capacity to write or to research, we grant them the opportunity to do that. And I oftentimes, for me, one thing that represents equity is my ability to ask my colleagues, like, I've got, I'm burning the barrel and I'm, I don't have a lot to give, so can you step in here? And I think that as we talk about equity, we are trying to consider not just And I think that as we talk about equity, we are trying to consider not just racial equity and our racialized identities, but also what we have to contribute. As my colleagues have mentioned, it's a very large load to carry. And so I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be able to look at colleagues and be like, I gotta go off camera. Can you cover me in this? And I think that we've really formed a camaraderie to be able to do that with one another. And that's reflected in the way that you've heard from co-chairs. We are taking turns as co-chairs. So that's why you've heard from so many members of the commission.
And if I could just add on that, 17 different members of the commission have been a co-chair of something so far, between the subcommittees and the full commission. So it has definitely just been very, very broad.
Great. That's great to hear. My last question is, you asked for some extra time, and so can you just talk a little bit about what that would mean for you, having that extra time? I know you have already, but just, yeah, what specifically will you use that time for?
Yeah. So I'll give you a couple of examples as I respond to this question. When scheduling meetings, trying to have a meeting on Monday evenings and Thursday evenings and finding that that's not sufficient means occasionally having to look at potentially scheduling a third meeting a week. The last week of March, we were looking at adding a third meeting to that week, which is something that I know has, has come up in the, in the past here. It also prevents members from being able to read all the documents for as long and process them around their other scheduling obligations, which means that the meeting time is, is often a little bit less effective than it might be. So with additional time, it would allow for greater spacing between the meetings of a specific subcommittee. And those time, that time wouldn't be lost because it could be used for community engagement events or could be used for a different subcommittee. It would also allow for not having to go to a third meeting a week and allowing for that, that inclusive, community-driven process, to quote the, the council resolution, to be enacted. And the members often meet outside of this to plan agenda setting, for example, which is not something that is done in a meeting but needs time for co-chairs to, to meet. So that's in addition to the two public meetings a week. And so having the additional time would allow for the inclusion of all of these things in less frequent and with more spacing to allow for more time to process, more time to engage the community, and more time for members to consider what they're being asked to, to decide upon.
I just want to say that our plan has a community engagement phase at the end, when we're done, when we have, you know, the, the package ready before it presents to you. We would really like to be able to present it to the community, get feedback, and do fine tuning. And I'm afraid if we, if the process gets truncated, that piece may fall out. And I think that would be a shame. So we, our plan includes that right now, and I think realistically, that isn't going to happen if we have to be, conclude the, the, all of our work by June. If we have a few more months, I think we can engage in that final community engagement effort, which I think will be critical in terms of presenting the best possible product to the council.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Any further questions? Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. And thank you for the questions, Commissioner Rubio. There were some of mine as well. I know we have a lot of testimony, so I was wondering if I should wait for that. But I just want to put out a couple of things. First of all, like everyone has said, the labor that you're all putting into this is really intense. And your shared leadership model seems really noble, and I appreciate that, when you explained how often the co-chairs are rotating. I also know there's ramp-ups when you take on that role. So I can only imagine how much sacrifice you're all making, so I appreciate that. Eighty-two percent voted yes, and that's the good news. The challenge is that 82% voted yes. And that means there's a lot of different reasons why people voted yes. And sometimes I'm concerned, are we hearing from the different pockets, whatever that might be? And how are you going about, in your engagement phase, of trying to do enough outreach so that you hear the collection of voices that make up that 82%? I'm just curious. And are you at that phase now of making those kind of decisions? It sounds like you are.
So there's sort of two different types of community, and it's more than two, but two specifically. There's the community engagement where, and the commission wrote a, a community engagement framework back last March, in which they addressed how they wanted to do this. One type is asking folks open-ended questions that, that help to develop the recommendations. And then secondly, once there is essentially a draft at the end, going back and saying, this is what the members heard and decided based off of that engagement, where can that be adjusted, as, as Coach Katherin just mentioned? And so the, that second part is at the end and is not yet there. The commission's not quite at that point. But the first part is ongoing throughout this entire process. And so one of the things that the commission has started to do with the help of now having additional staff to support that is reaching out, not only doing general open events for the public in as many different formats and timelines as possible, but also talking to specific groups, community-based organizations, business groups, chambers of commerce, things like that, and trying to plan, ask them to host events that are designed to give input from their networks and their members to the commission, and doing that in a diverse way that's representative of the entirety of not only the 82%, but actually the full 100%. Because the 18% who didn't support this should have their voices represented too, now that we know that there will be an oversight board. And so that process is, is ongoing. Those took a little bit longer to get started because we have to work around their schedules, the community-based organizations or business groups or whatever the group may be. But that's how, the two together of the open, general listening sessions, Q and A's, et cetera, as well as the, the specific groupings are designed to collectively, diversely represent the viewpoints of the entirety of this community. Does that answer the question?
It did, and you went beyond. Thank you. So my experience with something this complex, when you're kind of come with findings, and is that when do we get to weigh in? And sometimes when we have something this complex, it's such a hurry-up-and-wait process. So the engagement needs space to breathe, but also we need time so that we can engage with you. And I just want to make sure that we, I, I want to know, one, when, when's the right time to really tune in? I think we've, I've been respecting your journey that you're on, and you're all working your tails off. So it's when can we jump in, not just to listen to understand, but to give some points of view on where things are landing? Like, when do you want our engagement?
You could submit public comment, too. I mean, no one's stopping you from that. But also, you know, you could always come to our meetings. But in terms of, are you asking about, like, creating a specific time outside of our meeting time to meet and present what we have now? Or like, what, I guess?
So will the council be able to provide feedback, say, in June, when you, when you present something to us? Is there, is that in the process?
That is in the, in the project plan. Ideally-
It was just hard to look at the timelines and know when that was. That's all I'm getting clarity on.
Yeah, ideally prior, so first, we, we haven't yet had a briefing with Commissioner Gonzalez. We have that invitation out, and, and we want to make sure that we're hearing from everybody, ideally more than once, at the, at the commission. But after, after that, there'll be a, a time probably in late April to early May where there's more of an idea of what the, the shaping of this looks like. And, and time and schedule permitting, we would definitely, I, I know the commission members want and have expressed this several times, the idea of bringing folks back. As the co-chairs mentioned, there is actually at least one thing from every member of the commission, of the council, I should say, that, that has briefed so far that made it into a document, at least one thing, more than one in a couple of cases.
I heard that, and you did that in your report today as well.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great. Any further questions before we go to public testimony? How many people do we have signed up today?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Okay, so let's, let's do this. I want to honor and respect people's desire to speak. Try to keep your comments to two minutes, but we'll let you go to three. At three, we'll definitely cut you off because there's a lot of people who need to testify. And I'm also mindful, Kealan, and please remind me that at 11:30, we'll have to take a break for the closed captioner. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, we have Philip Chachka on line.
Thanks. And so name for the record, when you come up, you don't need to tell us your address or anything like that.
Hi, my name is Philip Chachka. I am a member of Portland Cop Watch. For transparency, one of our members is a PAC commissioner. Portland Cop Watch supports the adoption of this quarterly, quarterly report, and more importantly, the PAC's unanimous request that the city align the deadline of the PAC's work with the terms of the US DOJ agreement, which would give the PAC until the end of October to finish the work instead of June, as the city is suggesting. You should, so you know something about me, I recently sued and reached a $5,001 settlement with this, with the city and the Portland Police for violating my civil rights during the 2020 protests against racist and brutal policing. An unknown PBB officer sprinted up behind me and hit me with a baton in the back and in the neck, then ran off to hit other people. I didn't file a complaint with the city's current oversight system because I feel the system is so unbelievably biased towards the police that there was little hope for the police, little hope the police and city would take responsibility for their harmful actions. I have been attending many of the PAC meetings since they formed, and I'm so grateful for the time, effort, care, and sense of urgency the commission has devoted to their task of creating a fair, effective, and transparent oversight system. I look forward to the police oversight system that is community-led and independent from the police and city institutions that have conflicts of interest when it comes to holding police accountable. The system, the PAC, has designed, takes away multiple levels of review that have led to confusion and delay by having a person file a complaint with the new board, and then all activities related to their complaint up until officers order to undergo corrective action are handled by the same board. The current system could have a person bounce to Police Internal Affairs, then to the Bureau's Police Review Board, then to IPR's Citizen Review Committee, and then to the chief, and sometimes even to the city council itself. It's a complicated process. I appreciate the thorough quarter, quarterly report, and it makes clear that the PAC is working hard to accomplish much, much in such a short amount of time, as the city council fulfills their responsibility by standing by the timeline, timeline you originally wrote for the PAC and the PAC members are requesting. Please give the PAC 18 months from the implementation of the amendment to the settlement agreement and make it till October. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have AJ McCreary.
Hello. Is it on? So I'm a community member and a community leader, and it has been really interesting to watch this process. This is very forward-thinking. Council needs to get behind it. Not, not in talking, because, you know, Portland loves to talk about talking, but in action. And we just heard from this report that they need more support. If this is a really forward-thinking thing that we're doing, we just saw Charter pass, and as somebody who participated in getting outreach for Charter, we were underfunded. We didn't have enough support. But we still got the word out. This committee also needs that same support. And if Portland is going to be a place that is saying that we are doing things differently and that we are moving things forward, or that we are coming together, we actually have to do that. We have to do that with resources. We have to do that with patience. We have to stretch ourselves. We have to really actually listen to community members. And the way that they are doing this outreach is profound. This is something that we should be looking at in all of our bureaus, in all of the ways that we are doing city government. And that is what I'm asking for. Support this committee in a way that Charter Commission was not supported. Support this committee and also use what they're doing and start, let's, let's start taking this energy and bringing it to other bureaus, to other issues. Housing, our homeless issue, education, the way that we're engaging with the city, with our citizens. Here's an opportunity, and so I'm asking all of you, as this, as a community leader, as a taxpayer, as a citizen, as a mom, to really lean into this and to do right by all of us, to be accountable in this process, but also be accountable in what the citizens here are asking for, because we do need things to be moving differently. And we all are asking for that, and I know that some of y'all are interested in that. So let's do that. Let's be about the action. And this committee right here, here's the moment for us to lean in. Here is the moment. Get them the additional resources. Get them the extra time. Help them in the ways that they're being asked to help and shift the way that our government is engaging with citizens. Here is the opportunity. Here is the moment. Let's do it.
Next up, we have Brittany Brock.
My name is Brittany. My pronouns are she/her. Thank you so much to this committee. You all are doing incredible work. Thank you for doing this difficult and time-consuming work as well. It really helps us strive towards a better city. I have some questions that need clarification by Mr. Wheeler, who approves the report, not the committee, because once again, this committee is doing great work. These questions do not have a right or wrong answer, because I do not believe that. I just believe in knowing and not knowing. Currently, I and others have doubts with anything around the city of Portland and the Portland Police. For me, as a citizen, to help rebuild trust between the city and its people, the following questions must be answered for transparency before we even get into approving these reports. We need action and accountability now. Why are we the largest city in America with the police force without body cameras? Why does it need to be examined for disfeasible? Mayor Wheeler. My follow-up question to that, can you please answer? Is justice feasible to you? That sounds like a rhetorical question, but in this case, we can actually buy cameras for our officers. Justice is literally quite feasible. KGW reports that there remains an ongoing argument between the city and Officers Union. The union wants officers to be able to consult their body cam video before writing their reports. Now, Mayor Wheeler, really think here. Why do you think the officers want to be able to review the footage before they write their reports? Let me ask again now. Why are we the only major city without body cameras? Why do you, do you think the officers want to review the footage before they write their reports? I'm not done with my line of questioning. I can recognize, Mr. Wheeler, we do speak very different languages. Your master's degree is in public policy, which mine is in philosophy. So as far as someone like me who hasn't studied that, please explain to me why it is so hard to bargain with the Portland Police Bureau. I will admit, I can be a bit of an idealist here. So this is just my idea. An August street roots journalist, Piper McDaniel, reported that Portland is operating what is likely the most expensive pension program in the nation, a system which imposes a significant cost burden and could incur some financial risk to the city. The property taxes funding this pension program cost more than the city of Portland Metro, Willnuma County, and Portland Community College bonds combined. And yet, the system funds only those who became employed by the department prior to 2007. All told, in 2021, the pension program cost taxpayers $141 million. This year, the program requested $199 million for pension payments. Portland pensions, pension system is rare because it does not require employers or employees to contribute. Through the city, but the city doesn't believe the system is risky. Analysts warn the right combination of low tax revenue and high pension costs could result in the pension plan consuming a substantial portion of city property taxes. Also, some believe asking taxpayers to foot the bill for pensions isn't fair. Mr. Wheeler, can you use the tax money from the Portland, from the pension program that no other city has to put cameras on the Portland Police to support this committee? Not only will be the last city to ditch this antiquated pension program, but we could also be the last city to join others in having cameras and having a more accountable police force. And we can support this committee in giving them more resources. Last thing, the greatest perpetrators of violence in this city are the police, not the poor.
I'll quickly answer your questions. Number one, why are we the last city in America? It has largely to do with the fact that our police bureau is unionized, and they've taken a very strong stance. I'm not telling them they're wrong, but the council has a different stance with regard to whether or not they should be able to view prior to writing their reports. As I'm sure you're aware, the council and the union disagree on that. We're still adhering to the required process under federal law. It's going to arbitration, and ultimately, an arbitrator will decide whether this council is correct in terms of the current position around not viewing in advance, or alternatively, whether the union is correct in terms of their belief. And of, of course, overlaying all of this is the fact that the United States Department of Justice has a say on this as well. But that, that is in process, and it is because we are following federal labor law and federal labor practices with regard to collective bargaining. I will note that I believe I am the first mayor in the history of the city to actually allocate funding towards body-worn cameras. I believe very strongly that we need body-worn cameras. And I believe it's not only a good tool for accountability, it's a good tool for investigative follow-up, to understand what actually happened. So I'm, I'm very strongly supportive of body-worn cameras.
Then show us some action.
I'm sorry?
Then show some action.
You mean, like, passing budgets, allocating actual dollars, engaging in a collective bargaining process with a very clearly stated opinion?
Yeah, you can speed that up. You can speed that up.
Thank you for your testimony. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Danielle Mallard.
Welcome.
In person. Is Danielle here? Let's go on to Diane Salazar, I believe is joining us online.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So I'm testifying on this today because I do think that we need to actually focus on implementing the body cameras more efficiently. I know that we just had a discussion about that, but I'm also concerned about the fact that the police union has such sway essentially over the council. And I do want to know that every other union actually has to fight the cops occasionally for their rights. But shifting on now, I want to focus on the, on the tent ban that was passed by Commissioner Gonzalez just before the heavy snow. I think that is very concerning because shelter is a basic human right. And while I do not believe there is any hostile or malicious intent, that is-
Diane, there will be plenty of opportunity for you to be able to discuss this with Commissioner Gonzalez and the council, but that is not the issue on the table currently. The issue on the table currently is related to the Police Accountability Commission and the report they've just given. Can you please keep your comments related to that?
Yes, I'm aware. This was something that me and a few other people set up.
Okay. Next up, we have Mallory Bustos.
Hi, yes, I am a public health major and within public health, we believe that there's a health-in-all policies approach and that means bringing, every policy is a public health issue. And so I believe that also includes police accountability and police work in general. And I definitely support this report and giving them the support that they need, including the time extension, if not, you know, money and everything else that they need to do this. They're doing amazing work. I also would like to speak on holding Commissioner Gonzalez accountable for his ban. Can you tell me when in this process I would be able to speak on that?
Not on this item for sure. This, this is the Police Accountability Commission report to council and I would just respectfully ask that people stay on topic. Thank you.
Will we be able to speak at the end of the meeting or is it a different meeting?
That is not on the agenda today.
Okay, thank you. Well, I definitely support this report and support holding, holding all police accountable and Commissioners, the mayor, everybody accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Next up, we have Keely Higgins.
Good morning. Thank you for the time. Ted, I believe the last time I saw you in this kind of setting was when I gave testimony demanding that you end the use of poisonous gas on humans in this city. I recognize that there must have been some sort of miscommunication about when we were talking about the tent ban. I'm going to go for it. To give some context as to why I'm here, to address Renee Gonzalez's ban on the distribution of tents and sleeping bags via street response and the fire department.
You guys?
I operate within a framework of mutual aid for folks who don't know what that is. Mutual aid is a voluntary-
This, this is extremely disrespectful to the Police Accountability Commission that have this floor right now to discuss their item. You're not talking about that. So either get on topic or we're going to ask you to leave. Their impression is inaccurate. I don't know where you got that information. We post the agenda. The agenda is very clear in terms of what we're discussing. It's a public document. The Police Accountability Oversight Commission. It's not on, it is not on today's agenda. Well, you're here at the wrong time. I'm sorry. This is the Police Accountability- I cannot. But I can tell you, it's not right now. So, the, the way that people give public testimony on any subject, on any subject you would like to give public testimony, you can see the council clerk or you can go to the council clerk's website. You can sign up to talk about any subject you want for three minutes at a city council meeting. I would encourage you to do that. Absolutely not right now. It's not on today's agenda. That is correct. The item you are referring to is not on today's agenda. You can talk about it during communications, yes, and she would be more than delighted to sign you up for that.
All right, well, lift the ban. It's killing people. It's inhumane and it's evil and it's skate hard. And can I get a fuck Ted Wheeler in the chat?
Fuck Ted Wheeler!
You know, when you do that, it actually totally undercuts the rest of your argument. Well, and, and as a result of your behavior, nobody really cares what you think either. Did you consider that possibility? All right, next. You know what? We're going to go to virtual if you have one more outburst. And I, I don't care if you like me or not. That's not the point. The point is you are disrespecting other people who have put a lot of time and energy into the Police Accountability Commission and you are being extremely disrespectful of their time and energy. And I don't know why you think your opinion is more important than theirs at this particular juncture. So, if you want to stay, stay on point. Do not interrupt. Do not disrupt the people who are trying to speak who signed up to testify on the Police Accountability Report. I'm just asking you to be decent people. Can you do that? You're not sure? Okay, well, we'll find out. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Rochelle Chase Miller.
Be they a police officer or a politician, they take on the obligation to work in the best interest of all citizens. Constance Wu said, "Public service is about serving all the people, including the ones who are not like you." But how does one represent those who are from, who are different from themselves? When decisions are based in paternalism and the presumption that the powerful know more about the needs of their constituents than the constituents themselves, leaders are not demonstrating accountability to those they serve. That's why commissions such as the Police Accountability Commission are so important. When cruelty is cloaked as tough love, for people we don't trust to participate in making the decisions that impact them the most, we are not being accountable. A lot of terrible actions have been justified by paternalism and supremacy. Colonization, slavery, residential schools, conversion therapy are all examples of those in power claiming to know what is best enforcing inhumane policy on the people they've dispossessed and reinforced by police and politicians. The same oppressive paternalism is present in Commissioner Gonzalez's decision to deny tents and tarps to unhoused people during freezing winter conditions, no less. The claim that denying shelter will help more than it hurts is not data-driven and it is not humane. I'm, I'm coming back to that accountability-
Please do.
Let's see, it's easier when I'm not interrupted. Blankets and sleeping bags don't do a lot of good in the rain and snow without the ability to stay dry and the idea that you solve a problem like tent fires by making cold people-
Folks, we'll take a 10-minute recess. We're in recess. We'll reconvene virtually.
The reason we have council rules is so that as was stated up front at the very beginning, the meeting, that everybody can feel respected and heard and safe in their city council. There's always some number of people who believe that those rules don't apply to them. And I'm sorry that that's the case. I'd prefer to be in meeting, but we now have the ability to go virtual when we need to, and that's what we're doing. So we'll continue with public testimony, but I want to remind people that now that we are virtual, if people stray off topic, or they want to drop the F-bomb, or whatever else, we'll just cut you off. We're asking you to be respectful of the work of the commission. They've now stayed an extra hour. As a result of this disruption, they have their own lives that they'd like to get back to. So I really ask quite emphatically that people please be respectful of this public process. With that, Kealan, go ahead and call the next individual.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have Noah Foley-Benning. They were going to join us online. I believe they've left the meeting. We'll go on to Sophia Barna Out. Yeah, I don't see Sophia anymore. Let's go on to Jessie Presley-Greason. Isabel Thomas. Debbie Iona. Debbie, are you?
I see, I see Debbie.
Okay. Debbie, you're muted.
Debbie, if you're, if you're on a phone, try, oh, there, there you are. We see you.
Took me a minute to get, juggle all the little things here. I know I'm, I'm Debbie Iona, one of the members of the Police Accountability Commission, and I'm here today in support of the PAC's unanimous recommendation for an October 29th end date. October 29th is a date set by the court order associated with the addendum to the settlement agreement. Council created confusion by setting a second end date for June 9th. PAC members have been working diligently. We meet two nights a week and do additional work outside the meetings. There is a strong interest in producing a well-designed proposal so that the city's new oversight board will start off on a solid foundation. A June end date will make that extremely difficult and may result in an incomplete proposal, or reduce opportunities for engagement with city council and the public. The city has a reputation for community involvement, but holding unrealistic expectations of people volunteering on city boards and commissions creates barriers to participation. I have been a regular observer at many city committees over the last 25 years, and I've never seen one that held meetings as often as the PAC. It is hard to understand how the city can consider holding this volunteer accountability commission to a higher standard than it requires of itself. As an example, the city was obliged to hire an academic dean for the training division within 150 days of posting the position. A year has gone by without an offer being made. The DOJ has demonstrated enormous patience in regards to the city's performance. I encourage city council to give the PAC similar consideration. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, I think we've had a number of people leave, but I just want to double check. Jax Volkoff. Sage Pagnazzi. Is Marie Landrigan in Lovejoy? She was planning to be in person. And then finally, Lo Goldberg. Okay, Mayor, that completes testimony.
Is there anybody else in Lovejoy who wanted to testify that did not hear their name called? Is there anybody there? Is there anybody online who signed up to testify, but your name was not called? Okay, very good colleagues. That completes public testimony. Any further questions or discussions? And if not, I entertain a motion to accept the report. Commissioner Ryan Moose, can I get a second, please? Commissioner Rubio, seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Kealan, please call the roll.
First, I want to thank all the commissioners from the commission who have been working really hard on this very, very big task for us. I also want to thank Samir and the staff of the Community Safety Division, and also the great facilitation team who's been working tirelessly to staff and support this work. Regarding the timeline, if the additional time is needed to produce a quality inclusive proposal, I believe that, and I support the additional time to get this right. And I also, and also underscore the urgency of need, which I know you are all very focused on as well. And I know those things can sometimes seem in conflict with each other, but, but I know that you're holding both those things together as, as people who are thoughtfully engaged in this work. I also want to lift up the words of Commissioner Hardesty that we heard back in December. And we all know that she took leadership to create this transformational work, but it really has helped at least me to, to really focus and ground me when, when I look at this work. And she was very clear about the charge and the focus. And she said that we're, you're going to have to answer, what does it look like for a police officer to go through the system? What does it look like for a community member to go through the system? And why is it better than what we have today? And that's pretty clear and very simple. It's not simple, but it's clear. So when I think about this, I, I'll, I'll very much look forward to the full proposal and to see how your, your thoughts on that as, as we hear the, the full thing. I also want to lift up, I appreciate the shared leadership model and the shared capacity practices that you all talked about. And I will look forward to a proposal that's really reflective of all the different voices and lived experiences of the members. And if there was, in fact, opportunity for space and engagement needed to ensure that the process itself was equitable and inclusive. And it sounds to me that that is your practice. So that's, that's really great to hear. So again, just thank you to each commissioner for your very thoughtful work, for the dedicated time. Thank you, Samir, for your support and leadership. I have a lot of admiration for the lift that you are all making on behalf of all our Portland communities. So for these reasons, I vote aye.
Yes, thank you very much, outstanding volunteers. I really do appreciate your hard work, and your reports are always very thorough. And it seems like we've really have been seeing a lot of you lately, and it really just shows how, how difficult this has been, and how, how elegant you've been at just staying focused. I really do appreciate that. I know that, and I'm also really impressed that you really caught up to the timeline. And that was today's discussion was about timeline. And so I've heard that, I will, I will, I will keep in conversation with all of you about that, especially you, Samir. I know, I think I'm on schedule to come back to your committee in April. I know we've been trying to get on schedule with you again, and so I look forward to that. I can't tell you, Samir, and you're, now you have another FT working with you, how impressed I am with how you're moving this along. We do have to get this right. Commissioner Rubio, you were wise to bring up that this must, we must have a better product than we had when we started. And everything I'm listening to indicates that we're making that progress. So thank you for your service to our city. I look forward to being in dialogue with all of you about this process. And mostly, I want to make sure the council also has time to wrestle with this. It's very important when we do these, these community reports that we have an opportunity to also engage at the end. Because, you know, the, I mean, I've had a couple of examples where it feels really rushed at the end, and I want to make sure that we have a chance to do dialogue as well. Anyway, we have a lot of pressures coming at us from many different directions. Keep remembering it's 82%. Keep embracing what that means. And anyway, I'm, I'm just really thrilled with the work that you're doing, and very, very supportive. And I just want to end with the sacrifice that you're making to your loved ones by putting in so much time as in your service to Portland. Thank you very much for that. I accept this report.
I just want to thank the commissioners for your good work here, committee members, and for your patience today. Important work that sometimes feels like has been put on the back burner by trial reform, and want to keep your work forefront and center and keep pushing forward. So thanks so much for your report. How about I?
I thought, I thought this was an excellent report. Really well done. I want to thank the staff. I want to thank the commissioners, the degree to which you've taken this seriously, the degree to which you have, with each report provided more and more detail. It's clear to me you're considering all sides of every one of these issues, and it's exemplary from my perspective. So I just want to personally applaud you. I also want to apologize. I want to apologize that there were people who did not want to talk about the report, who used this as an opportunity to try and change the channel to something else. And you deserved more respect than that. And so I apologize on
Again, sorry for the delay. The reason we have council rules is so that, as was stated upfront at the very beginning of the meeting, that everybody can feel respected and heard and safe in their city council. There's always some number of people who believe that those rules don't apply to them, and I'm sorry that that's the case. I'd prefer to be in meeting, but we now have the ability to go virtual when we need to, and that's what we're doing. So we'll continue with public testimony, but I want to remind people that now that we are virtual, if people stray off topic or they want to drop the F-bomb or whatever else, we'll just cut you off. We're asking you to be respectful of the work of the commission. They've now stayed an extra hour. As a result of this disruption, they have their own lives that they'd like to get back to. So I really ask quite emphatically that people please be respectful of this public process. Without Kealan, go ahead and call the next individual.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have Noah Foley Benning. They were going to join us online. I believe they've left the meeting. We'll go on to Sophia Barnout. Yeah, I don't see Sophia anymore. Let's go on to Jessie Presley Grusen. Isabel Thomas. Debbie Iona. Debbie, are you?
I see, I see Debbie.
Okay. Debbie, you're muted.
Debbie, if you're on a phone, there you are. We see you.
To juggle all the little things here. I'm Debbie Iona, one of the members of the Police Accountability Commission, and I'm here today in support of the PAC's unanimous recommendation for an October 29th end date. October 29th is a date set by the court order associated with the addendum to the settlement agreement. Council created confusion by setting a second end date for June 9th. PAC members have been working diligently. We meet two nights a week and do additional work outside the meetings. There is a strong interest in producing a well-designed proposal so that the city's new oversight board will start off on a solid foundation. A June end date will make that extremely difficult and may result in an incomplete proposal or reduce opportunities for engagement with city council and the public. The city has a reputation for community involvement, but holding unrealistic expectations of people volunteering on city boards and commissions creates barriers to participation. I have been a regular observer at many city committees over the last 25 years, and I've never seen one that held meetings as often as the PAC. It is hard to understand how the city can consider holding this volunteer accountability commission to a higher standard than it requires of itself. As an example, the city was obliged to hire an academic dean for the training division within 150 days of posting the position. A year has gone by without an offer being made. The DOJ has demonstrated enormous patience in regards to the city's performance. I encourage city council to give the PAC similar consideration. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, I think we've had a number of people leave, but I just want to double check. Jax Volkoff, Sage Pagnazzi. Is Marie Landrigan in Lovejoy? She was planning to be in person. And then finally, Lo Goldberg. Okay, Mayor, that completes testimony.
Is there anybody else in Lovejoy who wanted to testify that did not hear their name called? Is there anybody there? Is there anybody online who signed up to testify, but your name was not called? Okay, very good colleagues. That completes public testimony. Any further questions or discussions? And if not, I entertain a motion to accept the report. Commissioner Ryan Moos, can I give a second, please? Commissioner Rubio, seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio. First, I want to thank all the commissioners from the commission who have been working really hard on this very very big task for us. I also want to thank Samir and the staff of the Community Safety Division and also the great facilitation team who's been working tirelessly to staff and support this work. Regarding the timeline, if the additional time is needed to produce a quality inclusive proposal, I believe that, and I support the additional time to get this right. And I also underscore the urgency of need, which I know you are all very focused on as well. And I know those things can sometimes seem in conflict with each other, but but I know that you're holding both those things together as people who are thoughtfully engaged in this work. I also want to lift up the words of Commissioner Hardesty that we heard back in December. And we all know that she took leadership to create this transformational work. But it really has helped at least me to really focus and ground me when I look at this work. And she was very clear about the charge and the focus. And she said that you're going to have to answer, what does it look like for a police officer to go through the system? What does it look like for a community member to go through the system? And why is it better than what we have today? And that's pretty clear and very simple. It's not simple, but it's clear. So when I think about this, I'll very much look forward to the full proposal and to see how your thoughts on that as we hear the full thing. I also want to lift up, I appreciate the shared leadership model and the shared capacity practices that you all talked about. And I will look forward to a proposal that's really reflective of all the different voices and lived experiences of the members. And if there was, in fact, opportunity for space and engagement needed to ensure that the process itself was equitable and inclusive. And it sounds to me that that is your practice. So that's really great to hear. So again, just thank you each commissioner for your very thoughtful work, for the dedicated time. Thank you, Samir, for your support and leadership. I have a lot of admiration for the lift that you are all making on behalf of all our Portland communities. So for these reasons, I vote aye.
Yes, thank you very much, outstanding volunteers. I really do appreciate your hard work and your reports are always very thorough. And it seems like we really have been seeing a lot of you lately, and it really just shows how how difficult this has been and how elegant you've been at just staying focused. I really do appreciate that. I know that, and I'm also really impressed that you really caught up to the timeline. And that was today's discussion was about timeline. And so I've heard that. I will, I will, I will keep in conversation with all of you about that, especially you, Samir. I know, I think I'm on schedule to come back to your committee in April. I know we've been trying to get on schedule with you again. And so I look forward to that. I can't tell you, Samir, and now you have another FT working with you. How impressed I am with how you're moving this along. We do have to get this right. Commissioner Rubio, you were wise to bring up that this must, we must have a better product than we had when we started. And everything I'm listening to indicates that we're making that progress. So thank you for your service to our city. I look forward to being in dialogue with all of you about this process. And mostly, I want to make sure the council also has time to wrestle with this. It's very important when we do these, these community reports that we have an opportunity to also engage at the end. Because you know, I've had a couple of examples where it feels really rushed at the end. And I want to make sure that we have a chance to do dialogue as well. Anyway, we have a lot of pressures coming at us from many different directions. Keep remembering it's 82%. Keep embracing what that means. And anyway, I'm just really thrilled with the work that you're doing and very, very supportive. And I just want to end with the sacrifice that you're making to your loved ones by putting in so much time as in your service to Portland. Thank you very much for that. I accept this report. I.
I just want to thank the commissioners for your good work here, committee members, and for your patience today. Important work that sometimes feels like has been put on the back burner by charter reform and want to keep your work forefront and center and keep pushing forward. So thanks so much for your report. I vote aye.
I thought I thought this was an excellent report. Really well done. I want to thank the staff. I want to thank the commissioners. The degree to which you've taken this seriously, the degree to which you have with each report provided more and more detail. It's clear to me you're considering all sides of every one of these issues. And it's exemplary from my perspective. So I just want to personally applaud you. I also want to apologize. I want to apologize that there were people who did not want to talk about the report, who used this as an opportunity to try and change the channel to something else. And you deserved more respect than that. And so I apologize on behalf of those who sought to disrupt the work of this commission and the work of this council. I think you're doing an excellent job. I've heard two requests. If I heard you correctly, you can always correct me later. I've heard that support, staff support is an issue or a potential issue that we need to talk about. And certainly, I've heard the question around timing, and I'll pledge to go back and circle with my team, my staff, the public safety folks and others to discuss that with you about what makes the most sense. But I've heard your request loudly and clearly, and I appreciate the way you framed it. Happy to vote aye. The report is accepted. Thank you for your terrific work. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next item, back to the regular agenda. It's a second reading item number 179.
Mend vehicles and traffic code and direct the Portland Bureau of Transportation to adopt administrative rules to create a process for the installation of electric vehicle charges in the public right of way.
Colleagues, this is a second reading. We've already heard a presentation and had opportunity for public testimony. Is there any more? Any further business on this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll, Kealan.
Rubio. I want to thank Commissioner Maps and the PBOT staff for all the time and energy they put into this important project. And I also appreciate how PBOT's projects and how we all recently passed the right-of-way compliment that, I'm sorry, tongue-tied, that it complements the EV Ready Code project that BPS staff worked on recently that was passed by council. And together, the BPS projects and the PBOT project really will help ensure that more Portlanders will have access to EV charging. And as we know, transportation electrification, especially the need to increase access to public charging, has been identified in many policies, including the Climate Emergency Work Plan as a goal. So to that end, I also want to just point out that our two bureaus, PBOT and BPS, have been working closely together on decarbonization projects. And so I'd like to thank that team as well as thank the BPS team, Ingrid, Phil, Sandra, Patricia, and also all of the council offices who have been part of this work. So I'm happy to vote aye.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Maps and the Bureau of Transportation for answering some of my questions last week. I really appreciate this ordinance. It's definitely another step towards electrification, which reduces carbon emissions. We do need to incentivize more affordability for this type of infrastructure on our residents and users. And we must look at the right of way and the bigger picture as one of our city's largest assets. The tensions between adding more to the right of way, making sure that we have a bigger tree canopy, are all the challenges that we have to face as we keep moving forward. I will vote in support of this item and want us to remember that we have more and more and more discussions to have on a bigger and longer term. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I vote aye.
Great work. I, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you, everybody who worked so hard on this. Next item is a four-fifth item, item number 180.
Authorize the chief administrative officer or designate to negotiate and execute one or more lease agreements to temporarily relocate a portion of City Fleet's Staten Yard operations during the Oregon Department of Transportation I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project.
Colleagues, City Fleet's base of operations is located at the North Portland Kirby Albina Campus, including three acres of parking lot space which we lease from ODOT. Fleet needs to relocate operations temporarily due to ODOT's I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project, which is slated to begin later this year. The item authorizes the chief administrative officer or designate to execute agreements to secure appropriate space and facilities for relocation. Facilities property program manager Pauline Goble and vehicle services manager Mike Roy are here to present the item and answer any questions that you may have. Welcome.
Thank you. And Mike actually had to depart due to the delay in the meeting. So for the record, my name is Maddie Sauter. I oversee City Fleet. Not exactly sure what's going on with Pauline's audio. So as
I had it on mute. I'm sorry.
I can take it, Pauline. So as noted, City Fleet, I think you've all been to the Kirby Garage. It's a large campus located in North Portland near Legacy Emanuel. We have a couple of vehicle operations there and a large parking lot associated with that. ODOT is expanding I-5, and consequently, we are losing a large body of parking that's affiliated with work that we do there. And so we are losing those lots for six years. And so we immediately needed to find new parking and an industrial building to move an entire operation to. Not the whole operation, but just a portion of the operation. And we're lucky enough to find very quickly a site up at Swan Island that we could move vehicle processing and about three acres of parking to. So if we are able to secure this lease, which we have to have an ordinance to do, we will begin moving in April, and the entire operation has to be relocated by September. Thus, we are seeking council approval.
Very good. Thank you. Colleagues, any questions at this juncture? Seeing none, do we have public testimony, Kealan?
Mayor, do you have?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gonzalez, go ahead.
Can you, I'm totally supportive of this. I just want to be clear, but I have some longer-term questions. Is, is a portion of this actually under the I, under I-5? Or is this, is this the parking area that's under I-5?
Yeah, there's quite a lot of parking actually that will ultimately be affected. So it's both us and PBOT who will ultimately be affected. PBOT's section of the parking is the piece under I-5. Actually, all of it is under I-5. PBOT's section is called the South Lot, and ODOT determined after initial communications that that section of it is not needed for another two years. So PBOT is getting a little bit of grace in terms of finding relocation for that portion of the parking. I'm not exactly sure how they're going to solve for that. But yeah, all of this is parking that's currently underneath, you know, that section of I-5 and a portion of the Fremont Bridge.
But the majority of that's actually, is actually PBOT parking, and that's not impacted by what's before us today?
You know, Pauline can speak to that better than I can.
You know, there may be some PBOT's property that is affected by this. They are looking at it internally. We have been in close communications with Dave Mackelton the entire time, actually regarding this notification from ODOT for the leases, because the lease that we have with ODOT for our space also includes space for PBOT. So they have been, you know, they know that we're coming to council today, and I think they're looking internally on what they want to do or what they, how they can replicate what they're going to be missing. So Dave Mackelton definitely will be, if he needs to come to us for support, he knows that he can do that, and we'll be there to support him.
I appreciate it. This is a note to my colleagues. I visited this in November, December timeframe. And again, I'm totally supportive of what we're doing in this ordinance here, but for this authorization. But the long-term parking needs for PBOT down there, there are some real seismic concerns that have gone on for years and just want to call that out here. That is not long-term sustainable by any stretch of the imagination. So just a note to my colleagues, it's, we'll table that for another day, but that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else need questions at this juncture? Do we have public testimony, Kealan? I assume not.
Yeah, no one signed up there.
Okay, very good. Please call the roll. This is a four-fifth item.
Thanks for the presentation on this, and I totally understand the urgency and happy to vote aye.
Yeah, I also, thanks for coming with a solution. It's not easy to have to relocate a lot of space to another space that's really close. It's really nearby. So it's great that you found space at Swan Island. I was really delighted to hear that part of this presentation. Good work. I vote aye.
I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you. And last but not least, back to the consent agenda, item number 173 was polled.
Authorize an alternative selection process for the compliance officer and community liaison contract to comply with the City of Portland and Department of Justice settlement agreement.
We have Sarah Ames from the City Attorney's Office with us today to introduce the item. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. I am at the City Attorney's Office. I'm Deputy City Attorney Sarah Ames, and I work on the Department of Justice settlement agreement. And as you all realize, the settlement agreement that we entered into requires us to have a compliance officer and community liaison. For the last eight years, that has been filled by Dennis Rosenbaum and the team of of experts that he has assembled to work on the contract. Dr. Rosenbaum is retiring. He intends to retire this summer. He has said he would like to leave at the end of June, could stay on through August to help finish up some first quarter reports and other items and helping the transition. So we need to replace him because we are still under that, that provision in the settlement agreement that we are required to have a compliance officer, community liaison, we call them COCO. And the one complicating factor is, as you all realize, the Department of Justice has proposed that we move to an independent monitor model for this, and that person would, or team would assume the duties of the COCO. But until those amendments to the, until the city reaches agreement with the Department of Justice on those amendments, the settlement agreement, we remain under the terms of the current one. And so this is, this is the, the solution continuing with the current system.
Sarah, could I ask a question? We'll get to, we'll get to testimony in just a minute. I see Mark is teed up here. So if I understand this correctly, it allows us to continue the mediation with the Department of Justice uninterrupted, but it also ensures that there's no gap in those, if those negotiations aren't completed before Dr. Rosenbaum retires. Is that accurate?
That's exactly right. This is a provision, you know, that doesn't depend on the outcome of the mediation.
Okay, and this would not be brought forward but for the fact that Dr. Rosenbaum has indicated he wants to retire, correct?
The, the current contract with the COCO provides that there are another two years of extensions that could be allowed under that contract. So exactly right. We would not be coming forward with this if there was an option to just extend the current contract.
Okay, very good. Kealan, who polled this, I assume it was Mark, but I don't know. Mark, why don't you go ahead? Three minutes, please.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mark Poris. So he/him pronouns, and I'm with the group Portland Cop Watch. Portland Cop Watch has been involved in following nearly every part of the city's efforts to comply with the US DOJ versus City of Portland settlement agreement, which ostensibly is moving us toward a police bureau that no longer uses excessive amounts of force. The path to concluding the bureau's transformation has been in turmoil since the city's response to the racial justice uprising in 2020 exposed just how far away we are from having such a bureau. The item before you is seeking a special recruitment process to replace the COCO, who was hired by the city in 2014 after an extensive process that included community input. We remember that the panel of community members asked to weigh in on the final three candidates, advised the city to hire one of the two local applicants, not Dr. Rosenbaum, who lived in Chicago, and the city ignored that input. The procedure that's vaguely outlined here states that the Albina Ministerial Alliance Coalition for Justice and Police Reform and the Mental Health Alliance, as Friends of the Court case, will be involved in this process, along with the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing and undefined other community members. We hope that the input from these stakeholders is given more consideration than the panel from 2014. The agenda item mentions that the COCO's contract was extended to March 2021, 2021, with an amount of $499,000 some odd dollars, which is suspiciously just under the then recently adopted minimum of $500,000 for it to have appeared on the council agenda. There was another extension until 2022, which appears to have added over $500,000, but isn't listed as a council ordinance. Another extension to June 30, 2023 does not mention an amount, but also appears to have happened without a council vote. It included specific items for the statement of work, adding personnel and increasing compensation. We urge council to also be transparent and upfront about the costs of this position. This also brings to mind the question of why such an important job listing was placed on the consent agenda rather than being put forward for public discussion. The ordinance acknowledges that it is more likely than not that the COCO will be replaced by a court monitor. However, realistically, that won't happen for several months. Dr. Rosenbaum is retiring, as we heard, at the end of June, which is less than four months from now. And given the glacial pace at which the city's worked on hiring a civilian dean of training and other such important jobs, we hope that there is someone in place to continue monitoring PPB's progress or lack thereof before Dr. Rosenbaum takes himself out of availability to ease that transition. Even if there is an agreement to create a court monitor, that change to the settlement agreement would have to go before Judge Simon, who stated yesterday, February 28th, that he doesn't really have any free time on his calendar until July. Assuming that he approves the change, it will then take the city and DOJ several months to formally initiate the process to find, to find the court monitor. So it's likely this new COCO needs to be in place for at least six months to a year. Please continue to bear in mind, the overall goals of the agreement are to build trust with the community and have a transparent system of policing. Please do not hide important items on the consent agenda. Make it clear how much money the city's lack of compliance is costing taxpayers. And be sure to listen to the community voices you've chosen to help select the next person for this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Kealan, was there anybody else signed up?
No.
Okay, very good. Colleagues, any further questions on this for Sarah? Please call the roll.
Rubio.
I.
Brian.
I.
Gonzalez.
I.
Wheeler.
I. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, everyone. And Kealan, that completes our business for this morning. Is that correct?
It does, Mayor.
Very good. Thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.